Okay, so we're on call the Morrow County Commissioners Meeting to order and we'll start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on the agenda is, I guess I'll make an announcement that Commissioner Sykes, Chair, isn't here today, so I will be acting as the Chair today. So the next item on the agenda would be public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? See any public comment in the room? If there's anybody online on Zoom that would like to have public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. Uh, you don't see anything? You say anything, Matt?
No.
Okay, we'll move on. Consideration and adoption of the agenda. Any changes, Matt?
Uh, no changes.
I move to accept the agenda as presented. Uh, well, second, uh, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Changes at all. Partner reports, parole and probation, semi annual report, Gina Wilson. Looks up with that. Your Sheriff Snyder.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm stepping in for Gina. I'm not Gina.
Okay.
So bear with me here.
Clarification.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify. Um, so, uh, PNP is fully staffed. Uh, they're currently, they have a caseload of approximately a hundred and ten clients. Um, operations are running smoothly. Uh, they are currently, uh, meeting or actively trying, actively meeting their, uh, uh, they got standards in parole probation set by the state and they, uh, last year we fell a little, a little short and they've been working diligently to meet those standards and exceed them. And so far this year, they are, they're meeting them. Um, and they're hoping by the end of the month, they, they would have exceeded most of the standards. Some of them, it breaks, falls down into like home visits and, um, uh, some other, uh, contacts out in the field. And due to just staffing and other activities, they were falling a little short. And so this year they have really stepped up their game and meeting all those standards. Um, so we're expecting a, a nice report. We are down one. Uh, the, uh, our work crew supervisor is injured. Um, but so they've come up some, with some creative ways to, uh, meet, uh, or for those clients to be able to get some of their community service hours. We're waiting to hear, uh, budget seems to be going all right, but there's some concerns at the state level, as everybody's probably aware, and we don't know how that is going to affect Morrow County.
You can repeat that for everything. You could just, just loop that every time something comes up.
Yeah. Um, so we're, we're waiting to see what, how that's gonna necessarily have, you know, what the, the actual effect on Morrow County is. But, um, it doesn't, I guess on the good side of things, it doesn't look like it's going to affect us as negatively as our surrounding counties. Um, they, they got hit really hard. So, um, but again, it's all prelim, preliminary and so we'll see. Um, that's about it. Any questions that I, hopefully I can answer regarding parole probation?
I don't have any. Let's keep it nice. You're good.
Yeah.
That's a great report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the next item is, you're still there. Sheriff's Office wants to report.
Good morning again. Uh, things at the Sheriff's Office is going great. Uh, we're working hard and, um, I, I am happy. I guess I'm excited to report that if everything works out, we will be fully staffed on the patrol side, including our patrol sergeant on July fourteenth. Uh, we're at the final stages of the two backgrounds. One is for patrol. One is for the, the patrol sergeant, um, and everything, if everything continues to move forward without any hiccups, we are expecting or, yeah, predicting to be fully staffed by July fourteenth, which is exciting. It has been several years since we've been this staff, but it's been several years since we've been fully staffed on that side of the house. Uh, dispatch is looking really good. Uh, we just, uh, finished up a background on a dispatcher and, uh, we are just starting a second, uh, background on a, on another dispatcher. If, and which would only leave us with one opening in dispatch. Civil is fully staffed and running strong. Um, other than that, it's just day to day, the normal day to day stuff. That I can think of.
Any questions? Um, sure. So when I look at the monthly stats, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look for anything that jumps out and I haven't seen anything, but is there anything that you would say that we ought to be looking for? You know, I'm trying to see trends or, you know, something that's out of places. Is there anything else that you'd recommend looking at when we're going through this?
Uh, right now, no. Uh, everything's pretty steady. Um, and it's the time of the year. We, we, the, kind of a loaded question, Commissioner. A, a year ago, I would, I would probably have a different response. This year, uh, in the way we're setting staff wise, I'm gonna say no. Uh, we have, because of the, the approval of the added positions and the fact that we're able to fill those positions, we're having more deputies out there and we're able to maintain our twenty-four hour coverage. And so we're do, making sure we're doing our extra patrols in the, the suspicious areas or the areas that we have troubles in. Um, not saying that we're gonna, we're a hundred percent, we're gonna get everything, but it is, we have seen already a reduction in some of the crimes that at this time of the year usually starts spiking. Um, and this year we're, we're not seeing that yet. Um, and we're, I, I guess I would credit that to the, to the level of staff that we have out there. Um, and we're able to maintain that twenty-four seven coverage and we have more than one car. Um, in the past, we've had, you know, one car for the entire county. Well, everybody note, learns our schedules one way or the other. And if we're on the north end, well, let's go down the south end and cause problems or vice versa. And right now we're able to have somebody down south on a regular, you know, seven days a week. Not necessarily twenty-four hours a day, but seven days a week. And up on the north end, we're having two deputies up here. And, and so I think the increase of our staff is help maintain, uh, the activity, uh, at, at a, at a lower rate. Um, I would, I would expect, uh, as we're getting closer to kicking people loose and those are going solo, I would expect the traffic stops and, um, to increase. Um, but
Just a function of that though.
That is a function of it and it's part of education. I'm not saying the citations, that they will increase naturally, but, uh, you'll just see, I believe you'll see a huge jump in the, the traffic stops, uh, just traffic stops in general.
Okay. Um, if, if I don't, if you don't mind me asking a question, um, uh, does the full staffing, does that include up at the O H V Park with the, with the second position there?
Yes, and that's a really good question. I guess I need to clarify that. Yes and no. Um, it allows, so, um, I'm trying to answer that short, quick, or short version. Yes. The, the answer would be yes. Um, they probably won't be in that position due to training and everything until, uh, May of next season. But that's, that individual would, would be, will be hired, ready and being trained to, to, uh, take that role, uh, May, Mother's Day weekend of twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. For the record, Tamara Mabbitt, Planning Director. First off, we have a vacancy for a planning commission member representing the Boardman area. We had a new person. Was great. It was a little bit more of a time commitment than I think he thought. So that's been advertised and, um, I think probably the end of July will come to you. So if you know of any names, um, we almost recruited somebody from the audience last month who's just really interested and said, hey, uh, so we're not sure if he's gonna put in his name or not, but it'd be nice to have another, uh, have somebody bilingual on the planning commission. We haven't had that before. Um, had a, a planning commission meeting in May, approved a couple of more of the temporary conditional use permits for trucking businesses. We're now up to sixteen and we have two.
How long do those temporary permits last for?
Um, they're approved, all of them except for one have been approved by the planning commission. Um, taken out of staff hands. So it's a, it's a raise the level on the, for a year with the opportunity to renew for two years. So a total of three.
So it's one year and then you can renew it for two years or one year and you can renew it for one year twice?
The second.
Second option, okay.
Total of three, yes. Yeah.
Given what many are occurring.
We're very clear, um, throughout the process, formally on the record at the hearing, these are temporary. It's a residential zone. It's not intended for trucking use. And Matt and I have had a few conversations about it's gonna be a challenge when those come due. Um, on paper, it's very clear that they're only temporary, but, um, it'll be difficult to find him a place once those.
So we've got three years to find a solution potentially.
Um, I'd say more like two.
Two?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah. So just, it's, it's there. Um, that's not typically what the planning department will be in, but nothing about this has been very typical, right? Um, so we'll work together on that. Um, lots of different activities happening with a variety of renewable energy projects. Just wrapped up a meeting a couple of minutes ago, um, with a project that was permitted by the state, um, last year. Um, now they're gonna amend that project, break it into phases, and they also have a new team. It's a very dynamic industry. You might have the same person for six years, but really the rest of the team, four, five, eight people change. So we meet and review what our end of that development project would look like. Um, it's, it's not a problem. It's just, um, um, coordinating projects for coordinating permits and our projects and requirements and public works just takes a little bit of handholding. Um, on the renewal, renewable energy front, the Land Conservation Development Commission is, um, looking at, I think their final hearing and adoption for the new Eastern Oregon Solar Energy Siding Rules on June twenty-sixth. I may zoom in. We do have a letter on the record about that. You know, they gave us, um, they told us we have to either opt in or opt out for the new option. So there's three different sets of standards. There's the one we currently have. There's one that would be a robust goal five process. And then another one that really acknowledges the agricultural mitigation program that we, um, can't get renewables proposed to the county. It was the first in the state. So, um, just listening in and that will result in a code of, and, and at some point.
So to be clear, they're saying we have to pick one of those three, is that?
Actually, um, yes, but I said, can we have two? Because, so have one more or less as an interim, but then if, um, the county wants to go through a goal five process where you'd look at, you know, mapping all of your land and look at the, um, cumulative impact, impacts of multiple renewable solar projects. This is just solar, not when, um, could we pursue that? The time to do that, we're, we're looking at a couple of years to do the mapping inventory and a few other things, even though the, they truncated what would be a normal goal five process. I still think it would take a couple of years to get through that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Um, the Columbia River Heritage Trail, it was so smoking hot last week that we had to reschedule our, um, public open house to July first, cause the second one is over here at the Oregon Farmers Market. It was one of those ninety-five degree days and they canceled the Oregon market. So, um, that's underway. That would then, the rescheduled one will be July first over here at the Oregon, um, Farmers Market. Um, we have our, um, another code update. I know that's not your favorite thing, um, to hear, but, um, January one, the state of Oregon implemented new administrative rules for goal three and four farm and forest land. Um, we are, they became effective January one. This effort will be simply to put them in our code so people don't have to cross-reference state administrative rules, state law. It's all in one place. It's hopefully a fairly pro forma exercise and we have our first work session. Excuse me, with planning commission June twenty-fourth, and we have a work session scheduled for the board as well. I didn't have that when I published this, so. Um, the G I S mapping and drone work, Stephen's working on. Stephen and Matt Kenny were going to do a presentation today, but given the length of your agenda, we're gonna push that out to July.
Thank you.
And I don't wanna rush, rush him either because it's, um, it's a really great project and it's not fair to those folks who put that much time into it. Um, in the month of May, we had the steering committee for the drinking water roadmap project. Um, the agenda and the slides, I did not include in your packet, but it's all on the county, um, website. The planning department, if you go to water, um, it, it involved the four cities, two in Yum-Met联County, two in Morrow County. Um, really good discussion about the feasibility of extending water to some of these areas with, um, high nitrate levels. Cities have been really good, um, working, uh, with the engineering folks on that. Um, some really crazy cost estimates of what those would look like. Um, some cities have capacity, others like, for example, Oregon does not have capacity to serve outside their city unless some other things are done. So all this water stuff kind of is part of a continuum of related activity. Um, I've been working with Matt on a variety of efforts relative to the West Glen neighborhood. And this evening, there's an, um, an open house that the rev program is, um, is leading up and that's the Rural Engagement and Vitality Center out of Eastern Oregon University. We contracted with them to do outreach. I won't be there. Matt will be there, um, representing the county. Um, and it's the first formal, if you will, opportunity to meet with folks from West Glen, listen to what their concerns are and share this preliminary engineering work. Um, it's, it's feasible and from an engineering and other standpoint to extend city of Boardman water and Boardman is willing to do that, this will be a meeting to, to get the feedback from those landowners. And, um, as part of the roadmap project, the EPA funded project, we shared, um, I think there were twenty-six survey respondents, did a, a survey for all of the focus areas and one was the greater West Glen area. And the biggest concern to everybody about any of the options other than what they currently have is cost. So, um, we know some information, but not all, but the, the meeting this evening will be to get input and, um, answer questions and if they can't answer questions, then it'll go to the next level. I'm sure Matt will have more. Um, yesterday, uh, most of the day, we had, um, met with the Policy Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee for the Tower Road Interchange Area Management Plan, shocked us, me, with some large numbers about what that intersection, um, that overpass and the variety of options will cost. Um, Commissioner Winholt is on that Policy Advisory Committee. It's great to have him listen and learn the issues from the ground level up through this planning process. Um, the, the interchange itself would be an ODOT project, but there's lots of need for lots of intersection improvements in all of Oregon and in particular Eastern Oregon. So that ninety million dollar price tag is a big price tag, even for ODOT. So, um, and then the off system, off high, uh, off state highway and federal highway system price tag was, um, twenty-six to thirty million dollars. That's also a very high price tag. Um, so the afternoon session, which Commissioner Winholt's, um, um, wasn't there for that part, we talked about phasing options. So, uh, more to come on that. I just mentioned it to Matt this morning. It might be something we do a work session on before we are reviewing the final, um, plan for us to adopt. It'll be adopted by, excuse me, the county and then the Oregon Transportation Commission.
So on the, excuse me, afternoon session was there, the talk about the, um, you know, the work that they're gonna do now and then in the future, if this project ever happens, doing it so that we don't actually shut down the interchange, you know, cause we brought that up in the earlier meeting, that they were able to do Big's Junction without closing the
Yeah.
overpass. So I'm not sure why that they couldn't make that happen there because that is a very busy and very crucial interchange for.
Yeah, for, for all kinds of things. Um, there was some discussion, but no final resolution, like how is that going to look? But I think that's everybody's intent. Yeah. I mean, yesterday I learned that there are sixty-seven loads of cattle that go out of there every day on average.
If Northwest had their sixty-eight trucks out there.
Sixty-eight, sixty-seven.
That's just them.
That's just them.
I said, um, through some texting and some stuff, uh, dairies ship out about three hundred and thirty thousand gallons of milk a day and Tori was able to get from L T I, that's thirty-one truckloads of milk a day come. Yeah. So, and that's just that.
So is this how important, is that what you're saying?
No, it's not. Other commodities are going out to feed.
That's right. And that's not har, that's not even harvest.
Yes.
Oh my gosh, they have to.
That's not even harvest season.
And that's not even loves traffic.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
And, um, Eric is super busy with the paving projects, but, um, I'm keeping Eric in the loop and there's more to come. Um, the, I think important for me to share is that the takeaway message is you have to start with a plan and a design, um, but make it feasible enough that it's, um, it's feasible to look for funding for it, but it, it won't happen tomorrow. Although with the scope of development that's going on out there, I think I might actually have a point in my career where I develop a plan, where, and part of a plan and an implementation of a transportation plan within five years. And that's, that's unheard of. Usually they sit on the shelf for twenty. And it's important to take the main takeaway message is if it's not on a plan, it won't get funded. You at least have to have a plan and some options in order to look for federal, state, local funding. So that starts the, that starts the dialogue. Terrific involvement from all the parties, I think, that use that, um, that intersection all the way down to P G E and, um, Carty. So, um, um, and on that, I did include a copy of the survey which has a Q R code. Um, they'll keep that open. They said till June thirteenth, but if somebody wants to, you know, scan the Q R code and take the survey about that intersection, they'll take it later. Um, and more to come on that. Um, then I just included a copy of the public notice that we mailed out for the, uh, West Glen public meeting that's happening tonight. There's more I could share, but, you know, probably talked long enough. Any questions?
Can we discuss?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. County Administrator Monthly Report, Kevin. Anything additional other than the written report?
No, those are any questions?
Commissioners Monthly Report, Jay Lee, is she on? I know that it's normally just written.
I don't see her.
Okay. County Administrator Report, Matt?
Thank you. Um, written report is submitted with the packet. There's a few, um, highlights that we have. Um, just wanted to build on what Tamara said. We, um, with the West Glen Project, um, tonight's meeting is the first of three community outreach meetings. And so this is, and I would say there's a decidedly different tone to this meeting than several of the other ones that the state agencies have. A lot of the state agencies come down and they just are there to answer questions and listen. Ours is actually to try to, try to engage and have a discussion with the community residents of saying, here's the options, here's the pros and cons of it. Let's talk about actual solutions. And so we're hoping this takes it in a new direction and it really sets the place for us. Uh, we have several different funding tracks that are going through here. By the time we have our, uh, second, third meetings in August and September, uh, hopefully we'll have ideas on true costs, uh, from Boardman, infrastructure, everything along those lines, as well as, uh, uh, some of our funding, uh, paths will be firmed up and we'll, we'll really know where, where we can, where we can explore for solutions. And hopefully have the community buy-in on that so we can, so we can bring, uh, clean, safe water that's not delivered in bottles. And so that's, that's what we're looking at. Excited about that and, um, uh, looking forward to the other three. Uh, one of the, um, items that just want, did wanna follow up, emergency management grant, uh, a month or two ago, we, uh, got approval for, uh, spending more on the Oregon generator. E O M has decided not to grant the extension on that. Uh, they have some other areas they'd like to divert the money to. Uh, we are working on the other generator grant for the bar building in Hepner though. And so unfortunate news there. Um, the other item, this one's a little bit bigger and catching, uh, catching some insight from our, uh, attention up on Capitol Hill. Um, the community mental health program funding. We have an I G A that covers, uh, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five and that's expiring June thirtieth. Uh, this is pretty much the bulk of the funding for C C S to take care of mental health, uh, funding. Um, it was proposed to create a new I G A that would extend it for six years. Um, however, there's some particular language in there that put the counties on the hook if the state didn't provide the funding. And so A O C and the counties were, uh, not too pleased about that. There's been several meetings with the governor. Governors, um, not willing to concede on that language. And so, um, I keep getting a, um, I keep getting a little notice to say, you know, sign the new I G A, which is in the millions of dollars, so it wouldn't be signed without bringing it before you. Um, but there is supposedly a, uh, a discussion of having a, uh, stopgap to extend, to amend the current I G A to extend it for a couple of months or a year while we work out the long-term I G A here. Uh, we'll, I haven't received any updates since the meeting with the governor. I'll be contacting, uh, A O C and some other, uh, sources just to see where that is. We may have to have a short meeting if we do have that amended, uh, I G A come up. Um, one thing, just to let you know, the C C S contract, uh, which also expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, does have specific language saying if the I G A it's based on is extended, that it automatically extends along that, with, with that. And so we'll be looking into that and seeing what we can do. So just to give you a heads up on, on that, we might be calling you for, for some additional, uh, meetings on that. Hopefully just a, a short one.
I'm sure Gus has been seeing the same email. I don't remember who it's coming from, but it's urging us to do not sign the I G A.
Gina is the one who's, yeah, like, so, sign it, wait until we've got.
Yes, and so, uh, it's very innocuous. It's just a docu-sign. Hey, could you please sign this? And it's like, no, no. So, um, so we're holding the, holding the bar on that. Uh, the other item is the strategic plan. We had, uh, good events in Boardman and Hepner, some really good discussion. I met with the consultant. Um, and they will be revising and getting, uh, the proposed, um, kind of consolidated, uh, distilled strategic, uh, initiatives that, uh, the community and the committee has, uh, has discussed and reviewed. Uh, we, we're trying to finalize a date. We're actually looking at the third to fourth week of July. It'll be on a Monday, Tuesday, um, either the twenty-first and twenty-second or twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. I hope to have that, an invite or at least a survey to see what works better. I know that's probably in the harvest unless you're already finished, but.
We, we will not already be finished and I will make time to do it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, again, what we'd be looking at is the first day mainly with the B O C and the, uh, committee to review the findings, to go through that, uh, the information. The next day would be, uh, B O C, um, department heads, possibly elected officials to discuss, and then the B O C to kind of finalize, uh, which initiatives you feel are the top priority for the next three to five years. And then we would look to, uh, possibly adopt that, um, in, in August timeframe.
Okay, everyone's retreating my combine, then we can, you know.
I was gonna say, we can just sit up on the front. We can get Bluetooth speakers and just go for it. So, um, so yeah, so that's, that is coming up. Um, the final thing, we'll be talking about the legislative actions, uh, for H B twenty-seven, twenty-five, um, shortly. But, uh, those are the, some of the major points that we have. Um, and looking forward to the budget hearing, um, shortly and get, uh, getting that all taken care of. So, any questions from the commission?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Anything you want to pull out?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good. So I will, uh,
I'll just make a comment first.
Go for it.
On the minutes, I'd had a couple of minor corrections. I telephoned Delory about yesterday, so I'm sure she's made those corrections for us to sign. So, perfect. No comments, so.
Okay.
I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. With that, uh, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Public hearing, budget hearing and adoption. Kevin?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Kevin, Finance Director. Um, do we need to, do we need a staff report first or do you need to open the hearing first? The meeting itself is a public hearing audit. Is there a consent form we have on that? Is this marked as a public hearing then?
Uh, yes.
Okay, do we have a? Okay, do you have a?
So, we'll open this up as a um public hearing for the um FY twenty twenty-six budget hearing and adoption. That's sufficient, Justin?
Yeah, there's usually some language about, but we can find something for just a testimony when people give, where there's proponents, opponents, those are neutral. So we have a public hearing, but I think overall.
That part of it, will that Kevin do the staff report?
I'll provide the stuff.
Okay.
Okay. So in the uh. Was the resolution included with this agenda item for the uh adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget? Um, as approved by the uh rural county budget committee. There uh haven't been any changes or or alterations since the approval by the budget committee. Um, one thing I would note is the format and the the recommended level of appropriations. Um, and how it's categorized has changed from prior years. Uh, it's common practice, it's historical practice. Uh, at rural county, in our general fund, we make appropriations by uh organizational unit or department. Um, and then in all other funds, they've historically been made by uh object classification. And so that would be like materials and services, uh capital outlay, special payments, interfund transfers and whatnot. What you'll notice, and and I can use the the road fund as an example. Is this year, this resolution uh has appropriations made at the department level in other funds. And that is due to some guidance. It wasn't guidance given to the county, it was guidance given to a another local government that um from the Department of Revenue. Um, that required um that pointed out some issues with the way their budget was organized. And in a- anywhere where we can, the the direction was to make appropriations and budget by organizational unit. And only use object classifications where they can't be assigned to an organizational unit. So most of our funds actually are for a specific department um or organizational unit. So that guidance has been uh incorporated into this. Apparently, they randomly audit, review budgets so they get submitted, and uh ours hasn't been picked. But again, um just to make sure that we're compliant with what their expectations are. Um, so also will afford um the county uh and department heads and officials a little bit more uh flexibility. Uh, sometimes, for example, it can be difficult to say how much, you know, if if a certain expenditure is going to be voluntary materials and services or capital outlay. You know, really, the the money's getting spent, you know, and the 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 classification of it to some degree is just kind of a an accounting function, right? Um, and in this case, where we're making uh recommending making appropriations at the organizational unit department level. Um, it doesn't matter if, you know, capital is a little bit higher, materials and services a little bit lower, as long as the total budget is not exceeded. So uh those are just my notes on on how the budget is organized. Um, other than that. I think that is really the concludes my staff report. I've um. But the suggested language for the uh motion for the budget adoption appropriations and categorizing taxes uh on the cover sheet. If there's any questions.
Any questions for staff before we open up?
Uh, no, I mean, we've we've gone through it also. The the format.
Yeah, so um we'll open it up for a public comment and anybody that'd like to speak in favor of the budget in the room. If you're online and you'd like to make any comment about the budget for rural county for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, please use the raise your hand feature. We aren't seeing any, so.
Anyone to guess, you see that process would be anyone in favor, it's any comment, then we'll say anyone against or opposed or anybody neutral who wants to comment. Right, no matter what, I don't see any hands raised, and that, just to be clear, we're on the same page. If it's the public hearing aspect, just allows requires that there is a public comment that we need to accept it, take it in. Doesn't mean there wouldn't be any, but that's the difference between just being a normal business item where no public testimony is uh asked to occur with public hearing, it does. So I don't show any so far, I don't see any of the Zoom, no one raising their hand, the the sig- the signal there. Um, I don't think there's anybody else in the hearing here. So I think at that point it can be closed out.
So saying that there isn't any public comment for the budget, we're going to close the public testimony part or? And um. Board commissioners will make a decision.
All right. I move to approve resolution uh R twenty twenty-five oh six, adopting the budget, making appropriations and categorizing and imposing taxes for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved, it's adopted. Next item, the FY twenty twenty-five supplemental budget hearing and consideration for adoption, Kevin. We'll start with the staff report. Because it's a hearing, it's listed, so.
Yeah. Do you have to formally open that here?
I guess it is, I mean, we're still, it's still a process, it's formally open hearing for the um fiscal year two thousand twenty-five supplemental budget hearing consideration for adoption. So you gotta open a new hearing.
Well, it's now a new open hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good?
We're good.
All right, so this is um supplemental budget to capture um unforeseen or unexpected uh. Circumstances that arrived that that resulted in. Could have resulted in us spending um. Uh, funds in excess of appropriations. Um, I have detailed the uh explanation for each of the uh budget amendments. And um. The impacts of all the budget amendments by fund in the uh resolution itself. And uh for the sake of uh time, unless the board would like me to go through those all individually, I would just entertain questions.
Uh, any questions for staff?
Yeah, uh I've just got one. It seemed like the most common was just a a slight need for more in terms of uh payroll. So why, or personnel expenditure, sorry. Um, is is there a reason why that seemed to be a consistent?
Um, yeah, there were small um. And and there were in the ones, for the most part, the adjustments related to personnel were relatively minor too. And um it was the the change in the uh state unemployment tax rate that was used uh versus what was used during the preparation of the budget.
Okay. I I was just, I figured there was some.
Yeah, I didn't get that specific because uh um that's overall, that's where the majority of the personnel expenditures were. Um, there's a a couple of departments where we had additional um um. FTEs that weren't considered in the budget.
Planned for, yeah.
Um, and uh the other significant driver would have been uh where we um had an open position. And we maybe hired somebody at a higher grade and stuff than what was required.
Thank you, that was my only question.
Okay, so we'll open up for public comment. Anybody in the room that has comment either in favor or against or anything at all? Not seeing anything, we'll go to those online. If you're in favor or against or any comment at all, please use the raise your hand feature. I'm not seeing anything that.
No.
So we'll close the public comment or testimony part of the hearing, and we'll come to a decision.
Thank you. Well, I move to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five oh seven.
I will second that motion, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Business item, item seven, classification and compensation study update from MGT, Mrs. Rogan.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, Rachel King is online, yep, I see her video on, so we'll need to mute her. Thank you. Uh, but I'll introduce her, she's our project manager with MGT, who is the company that we hired to perform our compensation classification study. Um, we've asked her to present today just to give the board an update and an overview of the study, um where we're at, um the timeline. And and um answer any questions that you might have of her. So thanks for joining, Rachel.
Of course, thanks for having me. I have a presentation, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, I will do that right now. Are you able to see my screen? Oh. Are you able to see it?
Uh, it's starting to, yes.
Okay, perfect, okay, everyone can see it. Sorry, I'm so used to Teams, I have to remember that Zoom is a little bit different. Um, so thank you again so much for having me, just want to give you a quick study status at where we're at with your classification compensation study. I want to review kind of the scope of work and our process and where we're currently at. Items involved have been completed, so we first start with study preparation and project meetings. Then we determine comparable organizations. We developed and distributed the market survey to those comparable organizations. We held an employee kickoff meeting where we introduced the study to your employees. We analyzed the market data kind of in the process at the tail end of that, um and then conducted those job evaluations. What's left is preparing the classification and compensation plan, drafting the report, doing a final presentation, and then finalizing that report. So I like to say we're about sixty percent of the way through, but definitely certainly moving forward and doing really well. Kind of a deeper dive into the scope of work in terms of really what we have accomplished so far. Is of course that study preparation and project meetings, so really involve kind of laying the groundwork, determining what we really needed to be looking at. Um, identifying any pain points, making sure that really this study focuses on not only the classification and compensation, but anything else that the county wanted us to really look at. Uh, and then we determine comparable organizations. So in this step, we identified organizations that are similar in size, industry, geography, or the workforce compensation to serve as those benchmarks. Where we're gathering salary and benefit data. So the goal for that was just to find organizations that provide a meaningful basis for comparison. Then we developed and distributed that market survey to those identified comparable organizations. A detailed survey was created to collect compensation and benefits data. It included questions about salary ranges, benefits, and other compensation related elements or aspects. So once we kind of close that survey out, I always like to keep it open in case we have anyone trickle in with uh responses. But really this week, we've been really uh reviewing that survey data, kind of doing some data scrubbing, thoroughly reviewing it and analyzing it. Pay, benefits, and overall compensation is compared to the market to really see where the county is competitive, behind or ahead. Again, this is currently in draft, uh where findings are still under review, and we will actually be reviewing this with administration next week. We also held the employee kickoff meeting, so this introduced the study to your employees as well as the purpose. This is really important, it helps ensure transparency and encourages employee engagement. Throughout that meeting, we introduced the job analysis questionnaire, which is a nine factor questionnaire, which we asked. And is really a key component in the classification aspect of the classification and compensation study. Employees are asked to complete this questionnaire about their job duties, responsibilities, and required skills. It collects detailed information directly from employees to ensure an accurate understanding of each role within the organization. From there, we conduct a job evaluation, which involves assessing and ranking jobs within the organization based on those factors. Uh, and then from there, an internal review ensures that jobs are fairly classified in relation to one another. And provides a basis for assigning appropriate compensation levels within the organization. This is also in process, and we'll be reviewing this with administration next week, but we do have that data all compiled. And then we prepare the classification and compensation plan again, kind of in process. So using insights from the job evaluation and the market data, we'll develop or update the classification and compensation kind of system and plan. And the goal here really is just to establish fair, equitable, and market-aligned framework. So that's kind of the scope of work and where we're at. Again, tail end of really analyzing that market data, uh we have collected all of the job, pardon me, evaluation aspects. So every employee's completed a a job analysis questionnaire, which really helps in the classification piece. And then next week with administration, we we will be reviewing all of that data. Uh, and then kind of moving forward on how we analyze that and where we want to go from there. Couple of things that we really wanted to highlight uh in this kind of midpoint meeting was the comparable organizations and how we identified those. So MGT used and looked at six criteria points. So we looked at population, income per capita, median value owner, occupancy, housing, total GA expenditures, and the thousands. FTEs, and then the proximity, so you know how commutable. We first reviewed Oregon counties with populations ranging from forty-nine hundred to thirty-one thousand, including an adjacent county. And then we considered cities and neighboring counties uh in Washington within a two-hundred-and-fifty mile radius. And then the county also provided additional comparable organizations for further analysis. So cast a very wide net to ensure that, again, we're really looking at who um it impacts your talent pool uh in the compensation market as well. Here is a list of those comparable organizations. We were able to gather data from most, not all, but from most of the peers. And again, we're still doing some more research, we've kept the survey open in case anyone trickles in. Uh, but the ones in bold had responded to the market survey as of mon- uh, excuse me, as of, I believe it was Wednesday last week. Um, and so that you can see that here. But again, most, we were able to gather some data for, but we have a really great, so far, comprehensive set of data from these peers. And then the survey, just a little bit deeper into kind of what that looks like, uh the positions were clearly defined to ensure accurate data. So we had the position title as well as a very brief one-to-two sentence position summary. And this really just ensures that we're getting an apples-to-apples comparison. You may have a similar title at another organization, but they may do different roles. So really, this helps ensure that we're getting the best matches. And then we review that data, we call it data scrubbing, where where we're really making sure that the data that we receive is comparable. Um, a good instance is maybe an organization indicated that position X is a good position for one of yours. But when we look at the salary, it seems hyperinflated compared to other peers. So we kind of highlight that, and then we'll bring that to the administration's attention. Again, we'll be doing this next week when we really comb through and look at all of that data. Salary ranges are used to capture comprehensive um compensation trends, so we look at the minimum and the maximum. And then we also ask for the total compensation as well. And then the data collected reflects accurate, real-time compensation. So we opened that survey up in May, and then we've collected data from May and June, so really, really current. We also asked questions about benefits, so health insurance plans and premiums, HSA, dental and vision, life insurance, retirement, paid time off. Whether that be sick leave, personal leave, holidays, and vacation time, work-life balance and flexibility, as well as some other miscellaneous benefits. Such as short-term disability, long-term disability, uh things of that nature. So a whole bucket of some other benefits that we have looked at and gathered data for. In terms of the job evaluation for the positions, like I was mentioning, we ask employees to fill out a job analysis questionnaire. It's based off of nine factors. And for each position, we're looking at education, work experience, their decision-making and independent judgment, their responsibility for policy development, their planning of work. So if they plan their own daily workload, or if they assign work to others in the organization, uh how they represent the organization, how much contact they have with residents. Uh, internal employees, things of that nature, work of others, so if they supervise anyone, their working conditions, and then their use of technology and specialized equipment. Again, this is that job analysis questionnaire. In the draft report, you all will have a copy of what this looks like, and if you want a copy, I can also share that as well. This is a really great tool to use moving forward, even after the classification and compensation study ends. If you all were ever to develop a posi- a position, create a new position, and you're unsure of where to place that on the classification plan, once we develop that. You can use this based off of kind of levels that are selected for each factor. There's an aggregate score, and then that's kind of how we place the classifications. We like to say equal pay for equal work. So positions that score very similarly will be placed together in the classification scale. Or in the plan, rather. Um, positions are evaluated based on the following, so we look at the job description, the employees completed JAQ, that's that job analysis questionnaire. The employees completed JAQ, that's that job analysis questionnaire, JAQ for short. A supervisor has a section to add comments, whether they agree with what the employees indicated, if something has been omitted, if there needs to be any revisions. And then we held virtual employees with at least one employee in each position, or virtual interviews, pardon me, with at least one employee in each position. Really just to re-review that job analysis questionnaire, make sure that we were understanding their position. Identify if there are any job description changes that may be needed, and which we will let administration know during our meeting next week if we've identified any of those. From there, the classification will, plan will be developed based on, first, we look at internal equity. Again, equal pay for equal work, so meaning how positions relate to one another in the organization, and then we look at the market data. And that influences how we feel that, uh, you all will be competitive in the market. So that's an overall process, wanted to dive a little bit deeper into a couple of the aspects. That job evaluation, the market survey, and how we selected those peers. And then here is our overall timeline, so as you can see kind of what we've completed, and then what we're currently in progress. Next week, we'll be meeting with administration to do an initial review of all of the data that we've collected so far, so that market data. As well as kind of where the positions are looking at in the classification plan, so where they're falling in terms of their overall score. And we'll be reviewing that, um, that is the end of my presentation. I'll leave this up, my next slide is just kind of a thank you, but I'll leave this up. Uh, are there any questions? I know that was quite a lot of information kind of thrown at you.
This, this might be more of a, a question, uh, for Lindsay, but when this is completed, uh, this seems like. You know, we're, it's gonna be completed right after we've, we've finished our budget, so this is something that we would incorporate for the next budget, what, what are we looking to use this? For, or?
Yeah, so the report is, uh, just a, um, that's what it is, is a report from MGT. So it's a recommendation or any findings, um, outliers, that kind of thing. That they would give to the county, and then the county can decide, uh, what to do with that, and so, um, it would. Probably be in the planning stages for the next budget cycle, um, but I mean, that would, we would have discussions about that for sure.
Okay. That's, that's one important thing, I mean, sometimes as it's going around, employees are like, oh, we got this, we got a guaranteed raise coming in. It's not the case, this is a common principle to go through and do these compensation studies, just to see where we're at. Um, uh, this one is different than the one that was done two years ago, because this does look at benefits a little bit more. And, uh, will allow us, if there's glaring deficiencies or anything like that, that we can. Come talk to the Board of Commissioners and amp it up for the next year's budget cycle. Unless there's something incredibly urgent that you would like to address before that.
Okay, yeah, I was always interested, thank you.
Hi, this is Sheriff Bullseye, I have a question. Hi Rachel, you mentioned a meeting next week, uh, who's all gonna be at that meeting?
Uh, so just leadership, so, um, and I, I, I wanna go, I. I wanna pull up my email, but it's initially just the project team, so whoever I held the, uh, initial project meeting with.
And who's that?
Um, hang on one second.
Yeah, the administrator, the finance director, and the HR director.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you Lindsay, I knew I was missing one, and it was the finance director, I'm like, I know the two titles, but I might need to check my email, just that way I didn't speak out of turn, so thank you. Good question, good question, Sheriff.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks Rachel.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, next items. Reviewing adult moral county public health, combined public health emergency plans, Robin.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, yeah, I've, I've put the, uh, updated. Public health all hazards emergency preparedness plan in your packet, it's quite lengthy, but, um, just as an overview. It's a comprehensive framework for managing a wide range of public health emergencies, including natural disasters, disease outbreaks. Biological, chemical, radiologic, and nuclear incidents. So it kind of acts as our guideline, is how we'll respond to those situations that could arise in our county. And this is a requirement from OHA that we update this, um, every two years, so this is our updated version of this. Do you have any questions after reading it over?
Just, just one little update on this, uh, the previous, uh, PHEP was. Extremely cumbersome, and so one of the goals on this was to, uh. To get it into a much more digestible and usable, uh, format, even though it's still fifty pages long and that. It's actually quite the shortening from what the other, uh, the other plan was, which, um. Um, we, we have a sneaky suspicion there page by the page, so, um, this one is kind of a edited, consolidated. And one more concise and practical to, uh, to moral county.
This is a lot more than fifty pages, man.
Yeah, this is, yeah, it's, but the other one was. Even more, very much.
Yeah, two hundred, maybe, something like that, yeah, it was a lot, yeah, and that's why we refer to it as the combined. Yeah, cuz some things we were able to, that are just redundant and kind of serve the same pers- purpose, we were able to combine into. A shorter plan.
So I wanna say that, you know, or the, really for the most part of it, I found it the, very well put together, very professional layout. And, you know, I wanna commend you guys for doing that, I did find, though, on like an active shooter plan. On page six, there's, um, some spots here where it said add reference here. So what, or it wasn't maybe?
Did you say page six?
Of the active shooter plan.
Oh, yeah.
And under prevention mitigation number one, at the end of it says add reference here, and then, there's a couple other spots, so. I didn't know if. Before, you know, we submitted to OHA, if that wanted to get the reference added.
We can absolutely do that.
That was that, and then in the pandemic plan. Page seventeen. Under financial resources, we're referencing coronavirus aid, aid relief and economic security, the CARES Act, the. Pay check protection plan program and the American Rescue Plan. Seems that those were programs that were specific for a specific pandemic. And they've all come to an end, I was wondering if we want to remove those from that.
I can definitely work on that.
Is, is the COVID stuff, is that partially just because the state of Oregon wants you to have a plan for that, cuz I, I? Okay, so. It's not necessarily that we think we have to, but they're like, you will have a plan, and these are the things you will reference? That was my, my thought was. So is there any corrections that you want?
Well, I think that they would just want to, before it's submitted to OHA, you know, if they're gonna add a reference.
Certainly that one.
And as far as the financial resources, it, you know, does say healthcare facility should explore federal funding options, including. Programs that aren't in existence anymore, and they were for a specific pandemic, or maybe it would read something. Similar to explore any federal funding options available or something like that. This is, uh, my understanding, a plan for going forward if there's a pandemic in the future.
Well, we've already had one, so clearly that.
Let's not have anymore, right?
So, you know, he asked, what would I, I would think that we'd want to remove references to plans that.
So Robin, could we move, prove this plan while removing just that little bit?
Um, that would be fantastic, yeah, yeah, that add reference here, I can definitely take that out, and, um. Yeah, that would be, that would be good for me.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to adopt the Morrow County Public Health Combined Public Health Emergency Plans. Uh, with the corrections that Commissioner Wynn Holtz, uh, mentioned.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All people say aye?
Aye, aye.
It's approved, thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much, and I can give you the updates when those changes are made.
Okay, item C, tree removal, Miller Road, Eric, is he on?
I'm here, good morning commissioners.
Good morning, it's like public.
Okay, my volume's up.
We, we can hear you, you're good.
Thank you. I'll set back, wow, I'll move back a little. Um, I'm bringing an issue to you commissioners this morning, um. Uh, we have a, uh, quite a few trees on Miller Road. Um, between Coonsy and the canal, this is just east of Boardman, um, these trees are becoming a hazard. Um, the reason I'm bringing them to you, this issue to you, is it is on a section of road that, that is a county right, a, a right-of-way. But the, do we, we do not currently maintain. Um, and, and thereby needing, uh, to bring it to you, um. Because of the ORS, and what, what that requires of how we can and cannot spend county money on. Uh, public access or a section of road that the county doesn't maintain. Um, I did, uh, research, not a surveyor, but I was able to. Uh, glean information from the road file, um, the road was adopted in nineteen nineteen. There was some interesting language in there that talks about where it started at this rock, please do not move the rock. Up to the, uh, alfalfa field to the west. Um, back in nineteen nineteen, and did actually mention there is a new row of trees, um, on the east. Um, we, I, I assume it's the same trees, they're, they're very large and very old and starting to break apart. The la- the, the adjacent landowner to the east brought it to my attention, I knew the trees were there, I've been watching them for years. Uh, but he, he is developing the property, uh, built, uh, tore down an old house, building new, and just really concerned about those trees. And, uh, as am I. Typically speaking, bids that we've gotten for tree removal, about a thousand dollars a tree. Um, there's about twenty there. Um, the landowner is willing to clean up the trees if we fall them on his property. And received a bid to do that, uh, like county cost at seventy-five hundred dollars. That bid is a bit old, probably need to update that, but I wouldn't expect it to be too much more, if at all. If the same contractor is willing to do the work, so I wanted to bring it to you and, um. Ask any questions that, that you might have, and give some direction.
Well, I guess my first question is, you said there's an ORS that says we can't do that on roads we don't maintain, so I'm a little confused, can we do this?
I, yeah, I apologize, um, we can do, I'll read the ORS, a local access road that is outside a city. Is subject to the exercise of jurisdiction by a county governing body in the same manner as a county road, except as follows. A county and its officers, employees, or agents are not liable for failure to improve the local access road or keep it in repair. Number two, a county governing body shall spend county monies on the local access road. Only if it determines that the work is an emergency, or. If the county road official recommends the expenditure. The public use of the road justifies the expenditure proposed. And C, the county governing body enacts an order or resolution. Authorizing the work and designating the word to be either a single project or a continuing program. So the way I read it, and Justin maybe can help, is, uh, we can do this. If it's, if, if the governing body determines it's an emergency, or A, B, and C.
Yeah, actually, that was a lot of options.
Well, yes, so this, the second option. Um, if the road official recommends it, and then also to include B and C, all of those things need to happen. Or, one, the governing body determines it's an emergency, and we can, and we can do it that way. Justin, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I guess it's an odd statute, but so example, if it's towards emergency, that could maybe fits that way, but the other A, B, and C would require a separate resolution to. Or a resolution we don't have, unless it's here drafted today, we don't have that aspect.
So, I will s- I will add that it's not an emergency right now, but it could be.
So Eric, you know, I, based off of what you said, you know, normally it's a thousand dollars tree, there's twenty trees, so seventy-five hundred dollars seems like a good deal, but. I have to admit, when I first saw it, seventy-five hundred dollars to take down trees. Could the road department take an excavator out there and push them over, and the landowner's gonna clean it up for less money?
Might be able to push on, it would be something I could try, be a, a bit concerned, um, as brittle as they are. Of sections of tree coming down on the excavator, um, there might be a safety issue there. I didn't consider that because they are so large, I figured, uh, a specialist probably should do that job.
Ask one question? Is this one we've talked about before, this seems familiar, this spot, I'm thinking more like eight years ago type of thing. Um, who owned this property beforehand? Or was this? Maybe not, I might be confused.
No, you, you're not confused, you're, it had come up before, I don't remember the landowner, if somebody said. Thank you.
Acres.
Yep, it, it is.
Means for a while, I started remembering these ones.
There was a court order about dividing up property and some different things related to that property. Bobby?
Thank you, um, so in, in the, in our commissioners' records. Um, Acres has been coming to the commission for, uh, right here in two thousand and fifteen. Um, they requested assistance with the deteriorating trees on the right-of-way on Miller Road. She said the thirty-five foot wide length of her property along, uh, Miller Road was taken some years ago by the county for a right-of-way. And since that area now belongs to the county, it should be maintained by the county. Um, there was a discussion that took place on the history of right-aways and, uh, Miller and Coonsy. And the fact that the county's not responsible for Miller Road because it's de- deemed a public road. They said they would see if someone might be willing to cut the trees down for firewood, so it, um. And I've had, I, and I'm sure Mike has too, numerous calls, uh, from Alberta through the years. I just thought you should, you know, know that that was, that was in, it, it's, if you went into your commission journals, you would find more on this.
Okay, thank you, that is interesting. Well, it seems to me like we should, if we do this, we should have a resolution, that's how I understood that ORS.
Yeah, I know, and I think with the idea it's not an emergency now, I don't think the idea of emergency coming up really fits that. I think the idea for the emergency, I think, with the statute is, there's just not time. It's not time to do a resolution, do all these things, because emergency has to get done now, and so if we are going down this path, it probably would have to be through resolution, so. We can set this, yeah, it'd be invited to have a resolution proposed, if the board wants to consider it. Um, also the idea, if there's any prior documentation that we've looked into this, I know, just it's come up before, I just don't know the whole history, I think. Mike and Bobby know it more, they've dealt with it, but it just seemed familiar when I remembered, you had the intersection. And I thought we had cut down some before that were more of a danger, that might have thrown that emergency aspect, saying, oh yeah, these ones are actually falling under, but. I don't recall the whole history of it.
Well, I, I'd be in favor of. Well, I, I'd be in favor of putting it off to the next meeting and have a resolution, and then pursuing that, that route, and then if we vote for it, then that's what we, we do.
I'd turn that, so the question I maybe have for Justin to research is, is if they're on county property, and if they were to fall and damage the adjacent landowner's property, what's our liability? It, it may be something, but, but I agree with you, the resolution, it's just something for you to bring back forward.
That'll be a question for the next time, too, yeah.
Would, um, just a question on this, because, uh, we talk about a, the, it doesn't need to work to be either a single project or continuing project. Is this something you'd like us to develop, develop the resolution just for this specific instance, or to leave, leave way for future consideration for other instances?
I, I think I'd rather it be single, and just let's address this, let's get it done, again, if that's what the board chooses to do, then just have it, go all the way, do it.
There are no structures at this time that are in danger, uh, that I would add that. Um, so, there, there is time, I'm very comfortable with, uh, what I'm hearing about, that, uh, it might take a little more time and not be ready for the next meeting, however.
Okay, well, in that case, that's okay, but, yeah, let's keep it on the docket and get it addressed, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Eric. Item D, rejection of invoice, P Ridge and Broodery and Signs, Kevin?
So we had a, other invoice come through that I'm not able to authorize for payment, I referenced the uh, statutes and our procurement policy included those details as attachments on this agenda item. Um, I would, more broadly speaking, about these types of items, would like to just make a comment in response to question that Commissioner Wenholz had asked me, probably several weeks ago, um, um, about, you know, what are, what are the impacts of, of these, and, and what does that, what does this do in the big picture? Um, we had a, um, we're, we've started our process with our auditors for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and um, they've introduced a new, uh, questionnaire, if you will, um, where there's very, very specific questions. So prior to, um, they really had only asked us to, to report and disclose things that are material uh, in terms of known non-compliance or, um, uh, with any laws or regulations. Um, this year, um, it's changed a little bit, we met with the auditors yesterday, and, and they are asking that everything be disclosed, and they, they will make the determination on materiality of it, so um, uh, there's been a few of these, uh, I suspect, I don't want to, actually, I don't really want to, want to speculate on, on if it could result in an audit issue, but, um, certainly, um, could be a, a deficiency in a control, I guess. Um, but would not be a, a big leap to, to, to get there, so uh, just, just again, want to follow up on that, that question, because new information came up, so. But in regards to this invoice, I've provided all the details, and, and if there's any questions, be happy to answer those.
So I guess, the question that came to mind, and I mean, is that the, one of the invoices, it was clearly for a project where they were putting um, TestMyWell dot Oregon dove, or whatever it was. So, and I get where you're coming from, from this, I think. But, and the other stuff, it didn't seem like it was related, so, since, from what my limited information here and my interpretation, they were for two different projects. Does that still make it in violation of the policy?
Uh, so yes, yeah, if it's a single procurement, in, in this particular case, we did confirm that the purpose that the order, the orders were disaggregated was to avoid the thresholds in the procurement policy, which is a bit of a, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So. So, I guess I'm a little, so what if we were to say, all right, go ahead and pay it anyway, and let's just do that and then do better in the future, what would potential consequences of taking that action be?
Uh, from, from, uh, like an audit and compliance perspective, what's done is done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a, a lack of enforcement or application of internal controls, uh, on the front end of the procurement process, um, that prevents this from happening, and so now we found ourselves in the, and and not just with this one, but with, with prior issues, in the situation where the, you know, the liability has been already incurred, it's perhaps, you know, it's appears to be a legitimate expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, it doesn't, I don't think, change the outcome on what an auditor, how an auditor would view it. I wouldn't, in my opinion.
Is, is there a possibility that, uh, we could, we could have more, uh, countywide training on, on how to make sure that we can avoid this in the future, or is this?
Yeah, um, I guess I'm gonna be, I'll, I'll be pretty blunt there, um, been offered, been had at some level, um, I think that, uh, and, and I guess this is my professional opinion. Um, in the department heads, uh, officials, directors, uh, if you have budget authority, you have some degree, the onus is to some extent on you to know and understand the policies that are readily available and communicated frequently.
Yeah.
Again, my opinion.
No, I, that's what I was asking for, so thank you for sharing it.
Well, I think. Well, I think that, um, the county has incurred the expense, it's not good that the employee didn't follow the procurement policy. I think that counties receive the goods, we've incurred the expense, we need to pay the bill.
I agree.
But there's problems that need to be addressed that are at a level a little less, yes.
Yeah.
Um, in common response to that comment, uh, what, we don't have the tools currently to put any sort of systematic controls in place, or on the front end of procurement process, as you know, uh, newer ERP system and, uh, implementation of and utilization of purchase orders for purchase over a certain amount allows us to control that. Um, and make sure that, you know, the appropriate documentation and review and procurement process is followed prior to the issuance of a purchase order, you know, that was one of the justifications for adding the rest in procurement position, um, uh, to help administer that, so we don't find ourselves in a position where liability is incurred, now we, now we just have to pay the bill.
Um. We did have, do a, uh, review and training in my, uh, manager's meeting, it's about a year ago. Uh, but one of the things we could do, it didn't, I mean, it was with director levels and that, so it didn't filter down possibly. Uh, some of the, uh, frontier people who deal with purchasing, supervisors, managers, office managers, and that. Uh, it, I would volunteer to create just a little cheat sheet almost based on the PowerPoint that we did with the training, just to distribute to all the department heads, managers, and those who do coordinate spending on that, just to say, here's the thresholds, and here's a cheat sheet, and have that available at their desk, so they can do that. Of course, like Kevin says, it's on the onus of the people who are making the purchase, and that's, that's true. And, um, while we don't have the systematic controls, uh, that, for, for this, uh, to take care of it right now, we can go back to the old, uh, paper copy, but on the side of the, the desk, if we, uh, necessary.
Okay, did, did you say the new ERP system will allow us to have that? Okay, so there is a potential solution that is coming.
Yeah, it, there, it's, it's, it's on the way, it's just.
Not a right.
A year out, so.
Awesome. Well, I think, Matt, that that would be, that would be great to do, and I would appreciate that. Uh. With that, I'm gonna move that, uh, that the invoice, uh, for P Ridge and Broodery and Signs, uh, be paid in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I will second the motion, any other discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I have a cycle classification request, fair manager and justice court clerk.
Uh, two departments have submitted requests for out-of-cycle, uh, positions, um, due to upcoming staff departures. So the fair manager has resigned, um, and also, we have a justice court clerk uh, retiring, and both department heads of those positions, um, has requested a period of overlap for those positions for, um, training and, uh, continuity of operations. Um, so these requests are out-of-cycle, so they are being, um, presented to the board um, in accordance with the FTE policy. And, uh, the fair manager is asking for two months of overlap, which the estimated, um, cost would be five thousand two hundred and five dollars. Um, and the justice court clerk is asking for a month of overlap, which would, um, account for an additional seven thousand one hundred and forty, uh, six dollars. Um, we have discussed as administration, and, um, Kevin has said that he would just, you know, expect for these, um, budgets to cover it, or be accounted for within their, um, current budget. So, um, all the information is provided in your packet, there's the applications, um, the estimated overheads, and the job descriptions for review.
I, I think it's a good idea, I think in terms of long-term organizational health, the transition between one person to another is is perhaps the most significant thing, um, and particularly, uh, with folks who have been around for a long time.
So, you know, I think it's a good thing to have to overlap the, kind of, on the job training, learn the ropes, something that's been doing.
So. Would. How, how do I want to move this? Should I do, I'm gonna do this two separate motions?
Perfect.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve of the fair manager overlap, uh, request of two months.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, next one?
Okay, I also move that, uh, we approve the justice court clerk FTE request of, uh, an overlap one month.
Second, any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Matt, amendment to ambulance service plan response time map.
Um. So what we have is, um, we are requesting, uh, approval of an amendment to the, uh, ambulance service plan uh, that was adopted, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the reason for this amendment is that when OHA initially, uh, approved it, they gave us a recommendation uh, to review the response time map. Uh, initially, uh, it was based on just a twenty-minute response, and so it was just twenty minutes from each, each location. Uh, they were like, we need more variety on things, and so as we worked through it, and, uh, they didn't really give us any direction. So we did find the OAR, uh, three-three-three dash two hundred dash zero-zero-eight-zero, which gave some nice response times which work really good in metropolitan areas. Um, that, uh, breaks it down by population and, and, and density. Uh, we have one little area that might qualify for the, uh, for the fifteen-minute response, all the others would be forty-five minutes, which I do not feel is a responsible timeframe for the ambulance, uh, service that we currently are contracted with. As such, we met with the ambulance service, uh, plan advisory committee and reviewed, uh, the map. Stephen, uh, in our planning department, GIS specialist helped us prepare it, and it did break down pretty much the same category, time response for, uh, uh, for these areas, and allowing that to set the expectation for our providers on, on what they do, uh, and how they respond. Uh, specifically, as we have full-time ambulance, we believe this is well within reason, and both providers had no issues with it, they were in attendance at the advisory committee meeting when this was, uh, when this was approved. And so we are asking for the, uh, the Commission's approval for the amendment of the map, uh, that shows a breakdown, uh,
Yes, only four.
Eight minutes, fifteen minutes, and forty-five minutes, and, um, and so we're, we're asking for, uh, that consideration for, uh, before the council today, the Commission today.
Well, given that I'm pretty sure that I live in a frontier area, I appreciate the, uh, the effort to, uh, not have anything be two hours.
Yeah, and that, that's, I mean, it could impact insurability, all these other things. Um, and quite frankly, with the response, um, we should be able to get up to the area south of Ione within a good forty-five minutes.
Yes, yes, I think so, too, so, just wanted to hear that coming. But I appreciate the work that's been done, and, uh, I don't have any problems with it.
One, one thing that might, uh, just as a note, um, uh, the, particularly the Health District still has some, uh, quick response kind of teams that are stationed out of Ione and that. Um, as those are not fully qualified as the advanced life-saving setup, uh, which is re, uh, which is noted as the requirement in our, uh, ambulance service plan, those are not shown on this map, neither were they shown on the previous map. So just in case any public questions that, so I know that there is a, a quick response team in Ione and up in, uh, the ranches and that, but uh, those aren't shown specifically because this is an ambulance service plan with a certain level of care expected.
So what that really means is somebody could be there providing life support.
Yes, could do basic, uh, CPR, not transport, but, uh, respond to the residents, and, uh, and so that's a possibility, so this is not saying you're out there and nobody's gonna get there in forty-five minutes. Uh, the commitment of, of, uh, those people on the QRTs that are strictly volunteers, uh, and so, but they're committed in helping out their friends and neighbors, and so we do appreciate those who, who staff those and respond in that way.
I move to approve amendment number one of the twenty twenty-four Morrow County Ambulance Service Order.
So I second it, any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Scott, item, Morrow County Title VI Appendix Request, Stephen.
We are not Stephen.
Oh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Apologize for Stephen not being able to make it, he had a dentist appointment, he had to take a kiddo, too, so he asked me to come over instead. Uh, coming before you today to kind of a follow-up, Stephen had presented previously our Title VI program, uh, that ODOT requires us to put forward, we brought that forward, it was brought forward by Lindsay at that time that we don't necessarily need to. We took that information back, it was a valid point, went back to ODOT and our, uh, RLS and, and some of our overseers, looked those things over, there is some very specific language requirements that exist in the transit world for the Title VI piece. Stephen and I combed through those two documents, the one that we had prepared with their blessing and the Morrow County one, we were able to highlight some deficits that existed in the Title VI program for Morrow County, not as a whole, but specific to transit, and we're able to come up with this appendix that we put forward, uh, working with Lindsay to kind of bring those things together and shrink it down as small as we could, we do have this appendix we'd like to bring forward for uh, your consideration and resolution. I can read through that, or I believe it was posted to you guys, I'll, I'll.
Yeah. Yeah, so we got it. So I guess maybe an edit here is, under vehicle load standards at the end of the sentence there, not exceed the vehicles, I was wondering if that vehicle should be a singular possessive instead of a plural possessive.
So I, I believe that it's multiple possessive because there's, we do have multiple vehicles out, right, so none of those three deviated fixed route buses that are there, and, or the vans, right, so none of the multiple vehicles we have are exceeding their limits, so we could make the correction if necessary, but I believe that that was the.
Because I guess the way I would read it, it's, um, not exceed the vehicles available capacity at twelve to fourteen-seated passengers, so with the singular possessive, that mean
an individual vehicle, but the multiple possess, or plural possessive, that mean all of your vehicles can't exceed twelve or fourteen.
Which would, would, just say what has to be then.
I, I think it should be singular possessive. Justin?
I think that works too, so just. V E H I C L, yes, no. Right?
No, it'd be an apostrophe S.
Apostrophe, so just with the apostrophe over. So it needs to be apostrophes.
Because it is a single vehicle's capacity and not multiple vehicles' capacity.
Doesn't matter either way.
Yeah, we can make that correction.
Is that the only correction you make?
Yes, it is.
I would, um, if, if you don't mind me making a comment, I would just like to, um, thank Transit for, um, being open and, and willing to collaborate on an appendix instead of having Transit have their own civil rights policy and, uh, the county have their own, it makes it a lot easier and uniform.
Well, I. Thank both departments here for doing this, because yes, it makes a, anytime you streamline something in it, less redundancy.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
With that, uh, I will move to approve the Marl County Public Transit Title VI Appendix as presented with that correction.
I'll second. Any discussion? And then on favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next time is draft letter for HB twenty-two.
What, what's, um, we were presenting before the board of commissioners today is a joint letter of, uh, of opposition to HB twenty-seven twenty-five. This is legislation that, uh, constrains, uh, the impacts of HB two thousand nine and twenty twenty-three to ports east of the western Morse Dam along the Columbia River. What we've done is I have made contact with each of the counties that are impacted by it, and all of them have severe reservations about the impacts of HB twenty-seven twenty-five and the fact that it's targeting, uh, specific counties separately than, uh, and inequitably compared to the other counties in the West. As we go through this, this, uh, letter just asks for, uh, for, for legislators to oppose the bill and look at a full-scale equitable, uh, application of, of the, uh, impacts of the ports being involved in SIP agreements. As we've reached out to the other counties, um, Hood River has already, uh, approved the letter. Wasco, Gilliam and Umatilla are also hearing it today.
Gillum.
Gillum, sorry. Gillum County. We need to talk about their spelling and haptrophonics. But you're right. So, and all three of those are also have it before their board of commissioners today. And so, um, with, uh, with some strong support on, on each of those. With that, we're asking for the, the board of commission to consider, uh, approving the letter and signing it as, uh, and authorizing staff to send it to, um, the state legislature. Just let you know, um, it's, it's fast-moving time right now, the third reading, uh, before the House is today, probably happening right now. Um, and they will be taking a vote on this. So the emphasis of this is we will be taking it before the Senate with the third reading and subsequent vote. If it passes, it will be turned over to the Senate for their consideration. We would take this and, um, and actually organize discussion with the four counties, the four other counties to make sure we have testimony and, uh, get it before their committee as they hear it out and just explain the inequable treatment of it. I do want to, uh, point out, uh, Representative Bobby Levy, uh, did vote against this. She does represent some of the counties and that are impacted by it, and we do appreciate her, her vote against it in the, uh, in the committee level. However, the rest of the committee voted to, uh, to board it to the floor. So with that, uh, would ask for your consideration discussion, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I mean, I think that this is the right way to go about it, and I think it's still a long shot, but let's, let's do what we can, and I, I think it's a very well-worded letter and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm excited for the opportunity to potentially get to testify with several other counties and hopefully that gets us more weight than the way we're often treated in Salem.
I agree with you.
So, uh, I'll, I'll move to approve the draft letter for, uh, House Bill twenty-seven twenty-five.
I'll second. Further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, um, and with the approval of your two votes, I am going to reach out to Chair Sykes just to see if he would like to digitally apply his signature as well. I know he's been keeping an eye on this issue as well.
Thank you. Valerie, any correspondence?
Oh, we skipped one. You're doing good, but you should cross that off, we haven't done it yet.
Oh, I did, thank you.
Almost got to the end, almost did it.
Thank you for keeping me on track. Application for congressionally-directed spending phase two project, Matt Gens.
So, um, this is in regards to, um, efforts to, you know, address the nitrate issue, uh, in the LubGuama. As you are well aware, we've received two, uh, congressionally-directed spending, uh, awards. And, uh, the first one is taking care of the, um, the project to identify and test wells. The second one, uh, and that one was shared with Umatilla County. The second one in the amount of one point three-two million dollars was originally awarded, uh, just for Marl County, uh, for engineering studies on how to, uh, how to expand municipal systems to address the issues of, uh, of unincorporated areas immediately around and accessible by those municipal water systems. As we looked at it and as we've been, uh, addressing West Glen and taking care of other things, uh, we've been, uh, prodded along that an application hasn't been made for the specific project. And Senator Merkley's office has contacted us saying, let's get this moving. And so we're, uh, we're looking at it, uh, submitting an application. Um, we've kind of come up with the idea to change a little bit of direction with this and specifically put it towards development of the city here of the Irrigan's, uh, water system. They have current wells, the way it's designed with its filter packet doesn't allow the full volume that comes through. And so their capacity to produce water is substantially less than their, than their water rights that they have to access. And their, uh, their desire is to get another well that's designed to allow a little bit more, uh, flow and have a surface filtration that would continue that flow, but still provide a good quality of water. There, the wells they've had have had great success, their nitrate levels are almost non-detectable, and so it's a great opportunity. So what we're looking at is to take the CDS amount of one point three-two million dollars and put that towards, um, helping Irrigan develop the additional well and addition and develop, uh, infrastructure that would allow us to get ready to take it to unincorporated, uh, areas around Irrigan. While, uh, those areas are not as impacted as much as West Glen, we wanted to address the, the issues of nitrates in a holistic way across LubGuama, and we believe, uh, helping build up Irrigan's water system is crucial in a large-scale, um, uh, addressing of, of immediate nitrate water issues. So we have the two phases. We have worked with, uh, Senator Merkley's office who said, we're okay with this, it doesn't touch any of the public wells, which was our last one that we looked at, our private wells. They said the money's not available for private well application, and so that kind of, uh, derailed our previous application. And we have reached out and since submitting this, and we have received from the, uh, from Oregon's, uh, Division of Water Quality and Water Resources that they are, um, in a in, in agreement that this is an approvable and applicable, uh, project to submit for. So we have some of the, uh, people that might have place hurdles ahead of us are on board with the project. Um, and the city of Irrigan will be looking to, um, to put o- over half a million dollars into the development of these, uh, these facilities as well. If we do this project and it does get approved, I would like to follow that up with an IGA with the city of Irrigan to firm up that they will have, allow access to out of, uh, out of city areas and that we can, we can make sure that's, that's all taken care of. But, uh, before I, uh, get too far down the road, I wanted to bring it before the board of commissioners, get your authorization, since the funds were, uh, allocated to the county, I didn't want to get, uh, applied for anything without having, uh, your consideration as the board of commissioners. Was that, uh, open for any motions, questions or concerns?
So just a question, curiosity, so would they be looking at developing another well where their current well is or in a different location, or we don't know yet?
There is talk of about being near there, I mean, it wouldn't be in the same location as the current wells because they want to still utilize those, uh, but it would be nearby, is what they're thinking.
Is, I believe their current wells off of the end of Fourth Street, next to the rivers.
Yes. And so, uh, yeah, so they, they've talked that there is, uh, room to, to develop there and that would reduce infrastructure. Uh, they still have some other capital infrastructure issues they're trying to do. The wells charge the system and then charge the reservoir, but they'd really like it to charge the reservoir and let, let gravity make it to reduce, uh, you know, costs and that, but, uh, that's something else for them. One of the key points that Senator Merkley's office pointed out is this is a development to address public health issues, not for, uh, future expansion, especially for industrial, uh, use. So this is for residents, uh, small commercial kind of things, uh, for industrial application. And so, uh, that is something that we're specifically targeting. Uh, so it doesn't include running it down towards the CD, CDA property or anything for future of this. This is addressing current resident issues on a public health, uh, topic.
Oh, good. I think how this money ought to be spent, so. I, uh, with that, I move to approve a focus of the CDS project application for exploration of an additional well and development of distribution infrastructure for the city of Irrigan in conjunction with mitigating nitrate-related public health issues for residents living in unincorporated areas.
I'll second. Further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Valerie?
Now I can move on.
Now you can move on, go ahead, go ahead Chair.
I believe you said there isn't any correspondence, correct? Okay. Commissioner reports, you have anything to say?
I, I didn't have anything to report on. So I don't have much, other than I will say that, like Camera mentioned yesterday, it was the interchange area management plan for Tower Road, the QR code that was in our packet, I believe yesterday that they said they were on keep that link open until the twenty-fourth, so that'd be next Tuesday. Have to make comments, and one of the things that they're looking for input on is they had three different scenarios of the interchange, the way that the on and off ramps would be, whether they widen out the on-off approaches and come up to a stoplight at the top. Or keep them winding out, have roundabouts on each side. Or, or what they call a narrow diamond, so they would be even closer to the freeways with the current are, and they'd go up there.
So a single stoplight at top or?
Single stoplight on each side of the, um, overpass, yeah, the bridge, and then the larger plan called for, you know, which wouldn't be on the ODOT part of it, that would be like Camera referenced, be the county's responsibility. That was twenty-five to thirty million dollars if I remember right. Widening Tower Road down in front of Loves, if I understood they're drawing right, there'd be a stoplight in front of Loves, one at Airport Way, I don't remember.
Those also could be roundabouts, that was also proposed.
Yes, it was.
I took the survey.
So that's what I have. Would it be useful to make a social media post and just blast that out again?
Sure.
For the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Okay. And that way, um, you know, I really hope that the people that really use that put something, put into it, you know, there was, you know, a mix of ideas on whether it should be a roundabout or you know, beef northwest, you know, you heard sixty-seven, sixty-eight trucks a day going out there. Their representative said their drivers do not like roundabouts.
What if they're nice and flat, trucks can just kind of cut that.
Yeah. I don't think it's good to be hopping curbs. That's how you bend wheels. Tard up tires.
That's all I have. Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn?
I don't want to make any comment, but I was expecting a longer meeting and, uh, I don't want to make any inference about Chair Sykes being dumb. I know that's not it, so.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Well done.
Now it's official, right?
Now it's official, yes.